Okay. I will now take a few minutes before I open the city council for a moment of silence. If you please join me. Okay, I want to thank you for that. We will now open the city council meeting and if you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands on our nation under God, native people of liberty and of us for all.
Hey, can I have roll call, please?
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf. Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkland.
Here, thank you very much for that, Sadie. If anybody wishes to speak during the citizen and community group comments, I don't have any sheets in front of me yet. But if you have one, okay, so we have one online, is it, all right. All right, let's let that start and we'll go from there.
Hello?
Yeah, we got you.
Perfect. How's it going, everyone? My name is Vincent. I just wanted to make a quick personal comment about the splash pad for this discussion later. I think the splash pad will be a great benefit for the city. It will give young families a fun, safe place to relax, beat the summer heat and help foster community growth. This project has been on the C checklist for a long time and I hope the city can deliver another completed project for the citizens of Estacada. Thank you.
Oh, we appreciate that. Thank you. All right, do I have anybody else that'd like to speak at this time? Do we have any more online? No? All right. We will move along to the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Are there any questions, removals? Or discussion you'd wish to have at this point? Right?
Just one quick question. Did it come up in any of the parks meetings about the splash pad? When the city starts to enforce restrictions on water usage, how that's going to impact the splash pad?
It, I believe it was mentioned and maybe Counselor Hughes remembers, but that is, if we didn't mention it, that is one thing, if we do have to restrict water, we may restrict the hours that the splash pad is in use and that would be. We'll figure that out as we're coming up with our water conservation master plan. So it's spelled out and we're not making random decisions. But yes, it could be have reduced hours if we need to conserve water.
Got it.
I think at the last parks meeting, it was just more discussed that somebody from public works would go in in the morning to turn it on and then in the afternoon when they're cleaning up the parks and doing their cleanup time that they would turn it off, but didn't really talk about the specifics as to times that we would later on work that out. And yeah, if we do come into water issues, that would have to be.
I just didn't want it to come up where like we're restricting people from using water at their house and they feel like we're living by a different set of rules when it comes to the city and have it be a bad look. Just something to consider.
Yeah.
I appreciate that question. That's good to clarify. So that said, are there any other questions on here that would like to be brought up at this time? No? Can I get a motion on the floor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you for that. Okay, we are at department committee reports. I will start off Jerry with you this time.
I haven't had any meetings since our last meeting, but you know, again, just you know, every, I know it's a, it's a thing for every committee and we're going to talk about it at a future point, but you know, just we need to get those, get volunteers, you know?
Yeah, great. That's good. Heidi?
Nothing.
Nothing? Charity?
Uh, yeah, school board met and they're continuing to do video tours. For those who are interested in looking at what, what's needed within the high school because that bond will be going out to vote. So if people want or interested and want to know, want to actually look inside the high schools and, and the grade schools and whatnot, they are offering video tours still, if you, if you can't go in person and they're happy to give you a tour if you want to go in person. They're also sending out flyers regarding the bond just to get some more information out there. Regarding the facilities, the they just wrapped up, there was a small roof repair that was needed at the high school and over at the middle, middle school, they've got the mini split project that's underway. The completion deadline is for June 30th of this year, so hopefully that's all good to go by fall and then enrollment right now is at 1,909 for the district total, but that is not including summit. Um, the road to success program is something that the Estacada High School has been heavily cultivating over the past few years and right now it's, it's on campus, but I don't know if word has, has got out, but they're moving to, they're moving the program off campus to the downtown space there on Broadway. So that's where these, these students will be continuing their, their education. And so I think that will be, that's definitely a positive because a lot of those students are, you know, 18 or 19 and they don't necessarily want to be on campus with the other kids or on a different path for completing their education. And so they kind of felt a little odd being on campus. So I think this is going to be a good, a good fit. And yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Charity. Paul?
Met with planning commission. They had a few things on the docket this past week. They had a public hearing scheduled for the Kellendon property that has been pushed off. They will meet planned meeting on April 17th for that one. The developers requested that that be moved on. We will be discussing the Northbrook modifications, so subdivision on Deuce and Eagle Creek, just some changes to that. And get our upcoming one, not this, not maybe this next meeting, but they've, they've approved the modifications on that. We will hear more on that. There was a land partition variance and then there was a ginseng drive ordinance. I don't know if you heard about that.
Change the street name?
Yes, confirm the street name. Apparently since the sixties, it's been spelled three different ways. So they meant to make sure they had it spelled the right way as in the.
Is it, is it the right way?
Yes, it is the right way now.
Good, good. Well, that's good. It sounds like they're doing some great things, so. Mike?
I had no meetings.
Okay, I think that's it. And I haven't had any meetings lately, but Melanie?
All right. I have, I put together a few slides just to help those of us who are more visual and help me keep on track and keep track of what I tell you from week to week. So first of all, next slide, I just wanted to announce that the next city council town hall has been scheduled and that will be held on May 20th at 6:30 PM. The location is, is to be announced based on what the attendance is because we don't want to have a huge venue that where people feel too spread out and scattered. We also don't want to be crammed into too small, you know, for the number that is attending. So you can RSVP through the Facebook event that we made, or you can also just send an email to info@cityofestacada.org and that will let us, you know, kind of get a semi head count about how many people would like to attend that. There's also the form is open back up online. If people want to send in questions ahead of time, then we'll, we'll have those ready for you. So we're looking forward to that. And then on the next slide, I wanted to let you know that the new dewatering system startup is happening this week at the wastewater treatment plant. That's a picture of the inside of it right there. There, there's a metal door that lays over that. The manufacturer is onsite to work with our, our plant operators and help them get that started up. And this is a, a different process to handle the biosolids. So maybe we'll have like a more in-depth once it gets going and we know exactly how it all works, we could give you a little more in-depth on that, but they have coordinated, will have this, it'll dry out what is now liquid typically and is applied to to farm fields. It will be dehydrated through this process and they'll be taken either to a landfill or to an approved, a DEQ approved field to be spread on it, but it won't be the liquid that people are used to seeing in fields around here. So they did haul some, the liquid biosolids that they had been storing to fields last week to keep that, get that storage level down. And hopefully that's the last time we will have to do that. It is, it's a less expensive way to do it than using this dehydrator system. But we don't, we just don't have the space in, in the area, you know, that we used to with, you know, it used to be maybe acres and acres and acres of hayfields or something and then a house. And now it seems like every, there's more and more houses closer together and it's really difficult to, to get that done without, you know, causing an annoyance in the summertime for next door neighbors. So this should be a, and this is really the system that a lot of places are going to now. So I just want to let you know that's getting rolling. And then next, we have our, our new wastewater facility. Contract manager, general contractor, CMGC, is, has been recommended. We received three proposals. They were from companies called which I had not heard of, most of them, or a couple of them, Slaton, Kuwait and Tappany. The review team met Friday afternoon, scored the proposals and there was a unanimous agreement to recommend Slaton. So the notice of intent to award has been posted. We're ahead of schedule on that, which is great. We thought we might need to interview the, the companies, but we were able to determine from the proposals that Slaton was the, had the best experience. And so we posted the notice of intent and then we'll be working on the contract with Slaton and we'll be bringing that staff will bring that to the April 22nd council meeting for you to review. So we're very excited to be moving forward with that. If you want to learn more about Slaton, you can go to sladen.com. I snipped that picture off of their, their website. It's really informative to just kind of glance through all that they do. And then next, we have just a little quick update on the main street project. It's moving forward. Thank you to Evelyn, who has been doing these wonderful construction updates every week. They go on social media and she also has a, a list of folks to email them out to. So they're currently working on curbs and storm drain and the sidewalks are on pause until the weather dries out. So we don't, you want to have a good product when we get done with the sidewalks being poured. We are coordinating with the fire district to provide some additional off-street parking temporarily because the on-street has been limited and that's been especially on the northern end of the street has caused a little bit of parking kerfuffles. And so we're working on finding an alternative while we're finishing up the project. They will be applying some cold patch over the areas, which is like the temporary asphalt right now is just gravel where they had to trench across the road to put in water pipe. I think it's water down here and it might be storm in someplace, but they're tomorrow. Dawn, thank you to Dawn for working with them on that. And they're at a point where they can cold patch that back. And so we won't be driving over gravel or walking or biking, whatever people are doing. It should be make for easier access until it's paved. And you can sign up for weekly updates at cityofestacada.org. Then you scroll down a little bit and click on main street updates and there's a form there to fill out if anybody would like to directly get that information about what's happening each week. So that is my report today. If you have any questions?
Nice. Was the cold patching part of the standards of construction?
Yes. Dawn's been talking to him about it for a while and they've been kind of going back and forth and they're at a point where they're not going to have to dig that out for a while. So they're, they are cold patching, so it won't be an extra charge.
You know, if Dawn's going to be able to sweep that area after they get the cold patch down, just make it safe because I haven't seen any signs for motorcycles or bikes or anything as they're coming down there. And if they hit that gravel, not going to be good. If we get some dry weather.
Been a lot of burnouts.
I will ask him that and either he will or the company will. I'm not sure which one, I, I think if they need to use our vehicle, then we would do it, but he might have the capacity to just do that and get it cleaned up. I, I talked to him about the sidewalks. Because there's even gravel on the sidewalks and such. So when we met on Thursday, mentioned that and they were going to get that cleaned up, but I know that it doesn't stay where he put it, so.
Is it just the trenches in the road that are crossing the road that they're cold patching? And is that all that was required by the construction standards?
Good question. I do, I, I will ask Dawn about that and send you an update on that. Sorry, I don't have him here tonight to check in on that. Yeah.
And I have one question on that as well. The Chapman's gas station, I know that we had the side entry. Now, in that plan, wasn't that going bye-bye or is that staying there? The entry that comes off of off of Main Street versus, yeah, off of fourth where they cut across traffic.
They will have, they will still have an entrance on fourth. There's, they won't have two entrances on main street. They'll only have the one, but they will. And I'm not sure if it got moved back a little. I can look at the drawing to see where that's at, but it might've got moved back a little bit from the corner because they had. They were pretty close to the corner there, but they will have it still on four.
All right. Any other questions for Melanie? Okay. Moving ahead, we are now at council business. First thing I have on council business is Ant Farm letter of support.
Right.
Me, Mike and Charity met with Ant Farm and went over some of the details of what they're proposing and I, I think it is a good way to go forward with Ant Farm and they've assured us that the model will look something like the Sandy model, which I've seen that for years and it's worked really well. But now's the time to talk about this. I, can I ask them to come up to a?
Yes, we, we have, we have Neil and Sierra.
Yeah, they're all here.
If you want to come up to the table up here, if you don't mind, we have to grab another chair.
Yeah, bring another chair.
Another chair. And any, they're here to, I don't know if you have a few minutes of something to talk about or you just want to answer questions or?
We're here to answer any questions. Thank you. We're here to answer any questions that you might have, offer details where they're needed and mostly just to say thanks for your consideration for this letter of support. For those of you who know what Ant Farm is, for a long time in Sandy, we've had a cafe and bakery that also served as something of a community center, something of a resource center. And a couple of years ago, we acquired the property of 221 Southwest Wade property that was formerly the Harmony Bakery. And we've been working on a remodel to that project for some time and what we're hoping for today is a letter of support that would allow us to access some funding to append a resource center structure to the back of that property. And so it'd be about 1,200 square feet. And it's just a few rooms that would offer a place for community members to meet, a place for other, other agencies in, in Estacada to offer their resources to members of the community. And that's, that, that vision is kind of what we hope to, to see enacted as we've seen it in Sandy. And so if any, if you have any questions or would like to know anything more about it, we'd be happy to try to, to offer what we can.
Could you introduce each of you so they know?
Yeah.
Because I know you.
I'll let you guys.
Hi, my name is Juanita Nizeto. I'm the director of youth and family services at Ant Farm.
And Sierra Miller, I'm the director of the cafe bakery.
Great.
And my name's Neil Hatley. I'm the director of workforce development at Ant Farm.
All right. And.
Paul?
Yeah.
So how, how do, how do community members, how do organizations access this room? I imagine you're using the Sandy model, so it'll be similar to that is, is there a sign up? Is there a contact? Is there a fee? How do they go about?
Sierra, do you want to offer this one?
Yeah. I mean, right now what we have in the current cafe is we have our access learning center. And right now we just have like our manager and it's by word of mouth and communicating when they want to reserve the room. And then that's how we kind of book it out and schedule, but at the start of Ant Farm, like it wasn't heavily used other than like what we were using it for our youth. And that's where we did a lot of our learning, like our resume building and interview skills is in that back room as well as like our volunteer tutoring, but now it's used pretty much on a daily basis by outside community members. It's just like a great place where they can get together and do their business, so.
All right. And, and could you clarify a little bit of exactly what it is? So you're going to be dealing with you know, helping domestic violence, youth, that kind of thing. That's generally what it's for, right? That's not, it's not a homeless shelter. It's not anything like that, right?
Correct. It is not. Yeah, yeah.
Could you dive into that a little bit? You're, you're looking, I mean, what departments are you going to have in there? What things are you going to be dealing with? So people understand.
Yeah. Going back to your other question before, I think me and Denise Salinas, she's one of the managers at Ant Farm. One of the things that we do is we go out in the community and we're always making connections because we really want to be able to bring resources to boot youth and family services. So that's one of the ways that we connect people to Sierra. So they can be here present because one of the things is that a lot of people want to help. But if they're like far away or stuff like that, like our community can't really drive all the way up there. It's really hard for them to connect. And also when you're like over the phone or something, it, it, it doesn't make a connection. You can't really feel or sense a human, you know, through a phone or something like that. So that's one of the main things. For youth services, we do use it for like computer labs. So if somebody is wanting to do a resume homework or things like that, then they can use it for that case. Another thing is like the cafe is a good entering place for youth to learn how to work. So a lot of these youth are going to be connecting with Sierra and their staff members to learn skills to work as well. And it's also because we recruit youth that want to be able to, to pursue a career other than, you know, what we already have around the community. And we also do more art events. We want to be able to bring open mic as well. As Manny, I don't know if you guys have the pleasure to meet him. He play, he does music, so he can be able to bring that music as well to, to the, to the cafe. And what else?
And I think I, I could answer your, your question directly. It is not a homeless shelter.
Yeah.
It is not designed to be one. It is, you know, two offices, a, a storage room and a little conference room. And so it, it couldn't be used as such if, if anyone wanted to. It is a place for, you know, like the folks from the Oregon ODHS to, to come and, you know, offer SNAP benefits. It's a place for us to, you know, meet with a family that's in crisis. It's a place for people to, you know, like, like we did in 2020 during the fires. It's a place for folks to come when there's a big emergency and they need a lot of information. And so that's, that's kind of what our vision is of this space, but I appreciate you asking that question directly.
I just want clarification.
Heard that through the grape.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Mike, you have something?
Just one other clarification for the people that weren't at the meeting when we were going over it is that it's specific to helping people in the 97022 97023 zip codes. That's where the resources are focused on helping people in our community, families that are struggling with different situations, struggling with about to be losing their home and keeping them in their homes. But people in our community, we're not going to be importing people from outside of our area. It's going to be strictly focused on people in our community that we're helping.
Yeah, that's, that's, couldn't say it better myself. This is for Estacada first. It is for our neighbors here to benefit from these services, to learn more about these resources. And you know, it, it is our job for inevitably when someone that isn't from this town comes looking for one of those resources to politely encourage them to, to go to, to look for them where they, they originally started at. And if you know us, you know that we do that on a very case by case basis. We get to know our clients. We, we know, you know, their struggles. We, we learn as much as we can about them and, and how we can support them better. And yeah, that is our intent is to, to make sure that 97023, 97022, SK to Eagle Creek, those are, those are the neighbors that we're looking for here.
Okay, great. Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, I, we've, we've had some community concerns about things. And so we asked for and they graciously agreed to include language so that funds can be used for cleanup, particularly upon around riparian areas, so the river and other stuff. And so that's a, that's going to hopefully help take a burden off of our public's works and will, will give us another source of funds so that we can meet that community concern. And you know, they have a lot of connections with some people that can do that work. And, and so I think that hopefully people will see a cleaner city.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Any other questions? We thank you very much for coming out tonight and giving us some clarification. We, we really needed that, so we appreciate it. And we thank you for what you do. So we will take a vote on this at this point. Let's put it up for a vote if you want to do that.
I move to support Clackamas County's funding award to Ant Farm for supportive services in Estacada.
Second.
Okay, our first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We appreciate.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, next on the list is a big one. Election signs. Code discussion. I've talked with the city manager about that and you know, we've always had a problem with tracking everybody down during the political season with all the signs that go up left and right. Now there's a window that's open for that. I think it's a 60 day window. Is that right?
Yes, let me double check that. I have the code right here. We have a, right now the political signs, the limitations are they have, they can't exceed four square feet. And they can be put up 60 days prior to an election and they have to be taken down 15 days after an election. And it is, I know it's, there's a lot of every jurisdiction, whether, I think Clackamas County doesn't have any requirements possibly. I was looking around at other cities. That some of them charge a fee, some of them don't, most of them don't charge a fee. But they usually limit the time, time, place, manner, kind of a thing with election signs and with the workload that we're under. If, if it's important to you that we manage these signs and that we do, you know, make sure people are getting their permits, paying their fees, we can do that, but it is very time consuming for code enforcement for our front office staff during election season. The little yard signs there, they don't fall into the sign code other than you can put them on your own property or private property. But if, if the mayor has brought this up that we might be causing ourselves more trouble than is, and Peter's nodding his head, more trouble than it's worth. And also it's slightly frustrating to, for people putting up signs and they don't, it's hard to interpret the rules sometimes. So it's in title 16 of our code though. And so in order to in order for staff to work on that, we need to get some direction and the mayor and I had talked about it. I just wanted to confirm with the rest of the council. If you'd like to give us some input on what you'd like to see on time limits, sizes, then we can bring back some suggested code to you and, and move this forward, but we do need direction from the council to bring a proposal.
Okay. Council? I, I have a very strong opinion on political signs and I'll get it out of the way and then I, I know it's not going to be the popular opinion on this council. I think political signs are visual pollution. I hate seeing them in the city, in downtown. I, 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 I think that political signs are visual pollution. So that's my opinion on it. Whatever you guys decide to do, I will back you, but I would like to see no political signs in this, in downtown. Heidi, you want to add?
I don't have any. You have some strong feelings.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a strong legal opinion on that. So political signs are constitutionally protected. And you know, the, the case I always talk about in, because of the opinion, the way that the opinion was written was by Justice Stevens and he, he said, there is basically no more efficient way to get out a political message than a sign that people drive by it, they see the sign. They know the business owner, they know the resident, they, they immediately think, okay. You know, I, this is someone I respect. They're supporting whomever or whatever, whatever, or whatever measure it is. So I think that the, from a legal risk standpoint, which is, which is how I view things. I think there is some legal risk for charging for signs. And I, I was not, I had not been aware of that. That makes me a little bit uncomfortable. You know, my, I, time, place and manner restrictions as far as limiting them before and after the election, I'm very comfortable with because I get that how people can view them as visual blight. And you know, watching like these signs slowly degrade because whoever didn't pick them up, you know, they've become like a nuisance or they've become a problem, but as far as as far as regulating political speech through a sign ordinance, I think we need to be really careful. And ODOT has, ODOT, which if you see a billboard, it's because it's grandfathered in because you can't have a billboard on a state freeway. But yet you'll see field signs, you know, all up and down the highway. And that's because they recognize that there's special protections for for people's ability to express that political view. So they, they have a size restriction on those. They can't be in the public right of way. They have to be on, on private property. That's pretty common too. I, I've had jurisdictions that have regulated so they can have one sign front and back per candidate. So it's, it's not like a hundred signs for one person. I think that that's, that's reasonable. But I think that that's that's reasonable, um but I mean, from a legal risk perspective. The lowest amount of legal risk would be not having, not requiring permits for temporary political signs. Not charging a fee for temporary political signs, if people put them in the public right away, yeah, public works should pick them up. And that should be content neutral, completely content neutral. Um it's not always obvious to people what's the public right away versus private property, particularly if the street's not fully built out. And so I'm not, I I I tell cities, you know, don't throw them away, you know, to have them in a location where the people can come pick them up. Uh cause they're not cheap, so um you know, is if if you guys wanna limit the number per candidate. Um comfortable with that, if you wanna a limit the size, uh ODOT limits it to a kind of a classic field sign. Um below that on private property, I get less comfortable with size limitations. I don't know that how many people will put a field sign and you know, multiple field signs in their front yard, I just don't, I don't think that would happen. But yeah, I I really believe other than the the dates that signs are up. Um that the more we try and regulate it, the more legal risk we have. Um and again, they, these political signs get special protection.
So we've got, we've got in our code time, manner, place already, a- and so we would be just removing the. And so we need to ratify, do we, are we agreeable to the time, manner, place now? And then do we wanna remove the permit process, is that correct?
And this like and the size potentially, because we do allow um impermanent construction and subdivision signs to be up to thirty two square feet. Um and they have a time, they have yeah, four by eight, like a sheet of plywood size and they have a time limit, we also allow. Oh, there's another one, uh real estate signs not exceeding four square feet in residential or thirty two square feet. In commercial or industrial, um those don't have a time limit, but I suppose when it's sold, the sign would come down anyway.
But our main focus is on political.
Mm-hmm, right, right, so right, so just suggesting that there could be, it could be a larger sign than what we, cause right now it's the. Um smaller than four square feet, I believe.
That's for yard signs, yeah, yeah.
So no more than sixty days before the election and must be removed fifteen days following the election.
That's the, yeah, that's the limit, other, some other places have forty five days, sixty days, thirty days. I mean, I don't know, how long, how long do you want to allow them out, is sixty standard, I'm not really sure.
Most that I see are sixty or ninety, and if you think about when people have to turn in their paperwork to run for office. That that makes sense because they're about three months before an election, so um. Yeah, I think that the last one of these that I wrote it was, I did, we did ninety days. Um we did, we did do that size limit to that field, uh sign size, um allowed.
And when you say field side, the what that's, yeah.
Uh four by eight.
Yeah, 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 so um and then they they had them uh. They had them um two by two, or two signs back to back. Um and in either i- in in the ground or on a fence. Didn't want people like um nailing them to trees, because oftentimes they'll nail them to a city tree unknowingly. Because they don't know where the right away is versus their private property. So those those are all um, those are all regulations I'm really comfortable with. And then it it just seems pretty inefficient that it's a lot of staff time to spend on something that we should kinda let people. We should give people the freedom to express their, in my opinion, um and this is a legal opinion, this was a personal one, that they be able to. You know, engage in their advocacy through the signage without um that permit or or fee process. And I just think charging a fee and requiring this permit, in addition to the staff burn. I think puts us at a little bit of legal risk.
Okay, all right, so we've heard on any more questions to this, are you comfortable with it? All right, can I get a motion?
I like the size restrictions though, is that what we're talking about doing is keep. In the residential areas and thirty two square feet. Uh like outside of residential area.
Uh yeah, that's what we're talking about, like a private commercial or uh uh that was the thirty two square feet.
For real estate signs.
Yeah, for for.
I like, I like that language to transfer, or is that what we're, is that what people are, I just don't wanna see somebody putting up a billboard.
No, no. It's just that, yeah, thirty two square feet was the, the max, it could be on a private commercial or.
Um non-residential.
Non-residential, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, so for residential, then we.
Residential is just the eighteen by twenty four.
Yeah, four square feet, four square feet in the area for residential, commercial or industrial. Um we move that that up to the thirty two square feet.
Right.
Okay.
And no, no permit fees.
And no fees, right, no, no fees or or application.
Is there any language about just not being responsible, like if the signs are there for fifteen days after that the city's not required to hold them? Like at that point, if they haven't picked them up in fifteen days, just throw them away.
They, maybe they want the city to pick them up and dispose of them further.
Oh.
And so I I'm kind of torn on that one, like if people, we say they need to pick them up, be you know, within fifteen days. If they don't, is there a fee for that or do we just bite them?
A disposal fee, could we do that and?
Then we'd have to hold mine.
Yeah. Oh, no, just disposal fee, I mean, our our public works have to go out and pick them up.
How many did they have to pick up? Do you know if the public works had to go out and pick a bunch up?
No, it was mostly, it was mostly code enforcement and it's mostly people putting them in the, in the right aways. Um it was also people being confused that they actually did need a permit, but this, we're not gonna make this in time for May. Uh we'll be ready for November, but I think for the May, I should just do. Not charge the fee.
Yeah.
Um and then we'll get this corrected for the November election. So I don't see it being a problem, I think people will be re- responsible um to go back and get their signs, they are expensive. And they may want to use them again.
Well, they've gotten really expensive, so trust me. My question for you, is this something that uh we need to vote on or?
I'm just, just vote to or just give a consensus to give us direction or I moved to, as I moved to direct staff to update the sign code. Is really what we need, we need direction from you to do to update, bring you an update.
All right.
Like make a motion to move to approve staff to make changes to sign code as discussed.
Okay.
Second.
I got a first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, we will bring something back to you and just to confirm on the time, everybody was pretty comfortable with sixty days before, fifteen days after. That's what's in there now, okay, all right, we'll bring something back, thank you.
Okay, next on my list, I have the TSP implementation of River Mill Road, so um I'll let you speak to that.
Okay, so with developments that are um starting to move again up in the northern end of town. And we do have three developments that are um gonna be moving forward on the, on three sides of Eagle Creek and River Mill Road intersection. Um and so it's a good time to decide what you want those interse- intersection improvements to be um in the TSP. It is, and there's some information, there's like a drawing from Karen McLeod about what a roundabout would look like, but it um. In the TSP, it lists that it could be a stoplight or it could be a roundabout, the um. The recommendation and the best practice as people are um in that line of work, traffic engineering right now, they're recommending roundabouts. Um and they, but that's a big change for us, um so I just wanted to bring it back, it wasn't really clarified in the TSP. It could, it could have gone either way, I mean, I know we had people, infrastructure, traffic and public safety, city council members were all weighing in on the TSP. Um but it wasn't a firm decision on which way we were going, whether it was a stoplight or a roundabout. Um so I wanted to bring it back to you and just um let you discuss and um. Get provide some direction on how I should move forward with that, it is more, a little more expensive up front to build a roundabout, but there's no ongoing maintenance like there is for a. Uh a stoplight.
Mm-hmm.
Um and the, I think it, I mentioned it in the staff reports and what John Baskett, the um traffic engineer was saying is that. A roundabout does allow like in evacuation, it works really well because people just keep moving, there's a power outage. Um you know, like a four-way stop, it just, everybody just keeps moving, um and it slows people down to provide. You know, safer passing through the intersection, um but again, like you said, you. We didn't make the decision or you didn't make the decision at the time of the TSP adoption, because you wanted to um choose what was best. After you considered it again, is my understanding, so.
Okay, so discussion on the table, go ahead, Mike.
I I originally hated the roundabouts, but as I've been traveling around in the Dundee area, Newburgh area, I've. Ran into several of them that just worked very well, I was just trying to think about what a traffic looked like, traffic light looks like there, I I take that every day. Um and just imagining traffic backing up in front of the houses there, um at a red light, people throwing trash out into their yard, stuff like that. And just having that back up during busy times and I think it would flow better with a roundabout personally, is my opinion.
Uh Jerry.
Um I I know roundabouts like not a very popular idea in Estacada right now, but I. I personally think that this would be a good, a good solution for this area. I also like um when you're bringing up, you know, we're talking about emergency evacuation, getting out of town. Um not people backing up at that light or if we get loose power, like you said, Melanie, and I mean. Not a lot of people know how to work a four-way stop, so it will be a learning curve for the citizens of Estacada. But I think it would be a safer, more efficient option, um really have to worry about. You're gonna usually find like more fender benders in a roundabout, not T-bones and major crash accidents, so um. Yeah, it's, it would be something the community would have to get used to, but um I'm I'm more in favor of a roundabout. But I'm not gonna, I mean, I won't die on that hill, so.
I would agree, it's the hill I'm not ready to die on either, but I I I'm in support of the roundabout as well, the evacuation piece is key for me. Just hearing them talk about them for other areas, uh being able to keep traffic moving would be uh a a big benefit. Having something like that. Um and then it's something, yes, we'd need to get used to, we're gonna have the one at Omseger coming up. It sounds like there may be one at Jackpot as well too down the line. Um and then who knows, maybe the River Mill and maybe here at the bridge as well too, as well. So it's all been talked about, at least in different areas, so I think uh, I think this is something that we will be, it'll be part of our normal, heading up here as well too.
Very.
So uh you don't, I I guess I'm kind of in favor of the roundabout too, um the only concern I have with that is if uh the property across. Eagle Creek Highway, Eagle Creek Road from River Mill El- Elementary or not River Mill, oh, River River Mill Road. Uh that property, um when it develops, uh you know, are there gonna be plans to continue River Mill Road um to connect with Ren? Um you know, going through there and my concern would be if we if we build or if there's a roundabout built in that. You know, would we be, would it be an easy fix to add, you know, another exit onto, you know, the continuation of River Mill Road going east?
I think it's included in the design already and the utilities already ran through there.
Okay.
I believe, the utilities already ran through that way, right, just waiting on the road.
I believe you're right about the the sewer line went up that, yeah, and then, and it would be, if you scroll down, it's almost the last page of the. Um packet and it does show that it would be built with that, um so it would be like a dead end right now, but. Um it would be, the roundabout itself would be designed so that it would be, the road would just have to continue and now would be a great time. Um to acquire the pieces of property, there's really not much on the west side that would need to be acquired. But on the east side, it would be a little more, but as those are gonna develop, um it'd be a good time to work with the developers.
Yeah. Just a little uh uh statement here, I I sat up the other night, watched a two hour show on the history of a roundabout. And where they originated in Europe, roundabouts went two different directions here, west coast picked them up. Cause it was easy way to direct traffic without major accidents. Um but they started off in Europe and the, and some, what happened was, roundabouts got bigger and bigger, they put more lanes up. And if you know anything about a roundabout, if you're on the inside lane and you try to get to the outside to get off, impossible on a big roundabout. But fortunately for us, this is a small roundabout. Um and you can take a roundabout out, a lot of states took the roundabouts out, cause they didn't work. But some states got famous over, Indiana was one of the states that put a roundabout just about on every corner you could imagine. And they've been very successful with it, so it's still up in the air as to to whether roundabouts are the efficient way to go. But like I said, the one good thing about it is you can pull a roundabout out and you can put a light if it doesn't work, so there's that. Um but if you wanna see it, just look it up online, it's kinda, it's kinda interesting how it all came about. But um you know, I'm kinda the same place you guys are, if it doesn't work, we can take it out. Um if it works, great, then we we're on the right track, so I would not die on the hill to say no to this if that were the the option. So. Any other discussion on this?
Um just a little caveat, when you said that about the roundabouts, multiple lanes, the movie European Vacation played in my head.
That's a good example, yeah, that's a good example. Um but that said, I I think uh if we could get a vote on the floor and how would you like that to read?
Um, is anybody have the?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got it up.
I move to recommend that we require the traffic control improvement at Eagle Creek and River Mill Road to be developed as a roundabout.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, I got a first and a second, before we move on with that motion, uh my, I'm curious, cause there, I know there was a development talked about right there. Um Alan's property that he purchased, um that's going in, is this going to affect any of that plan that's out there now? The roundabout.
On the Kellen Dock property?
Yeah, yeah.
It would actually, the roundabout versus the uh traffic, the traffic signal requires a turn lane. And so it would take up more, we'd have to purchase more property on that Kellen Dock property to fit the traffic light in. If we do the roundabout, um it's just a, it's less, we'd end up not um requiring so much um roadway be dedicated. So it would be less impactful on the Kellen Dock property um than the traffic light.
Okay, all right, um can I get a vote on this, uh all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, thanks for that direction.
Thank you, okay, I'm at the next citizen and community group comment, do I have anybody online? I have no speaker request form, does anybody wanna put one in or we move on, no, okay. Oh, it's gonna be easy, guys, um mayor, council reports and comments, I will start off with you, Mike.
Just thank everybody for coming out tonight, a little bit lighter crowd, um appreciate all the work that the staff did. Working on the CMGC project and and the discussion we had there and looking forward to the next meeting.
Yeah, thanks to our staff for getting us ready for this and and again, I I I can't say enough of the work that they're doing out there, having a business. The the communication has been great, um and I really appreciate the updates from the city on that as well too.
And Jerry.
Yeah, thank you all for coming out tonight again, yeah, like nice quiet. Um but I appreciate you, you two taking the time and showing up and being faithful, faithful citizens. Um good discussion tonight, I think we, it seemed like we got a lot accomplished in actually a very quick amount of time, so. Um appreciate, appreciate your candor, Jerry, on the political side, I love it. I know, it's all good, um but yeah, I I thanks, thanks to everybody for more of a, you know, light meeting, appreciate it.
Heidi.
Uh thanks for everybody coming, I appreciate you, it's nice seeing your faces every two weeks. Um I would just like everybody to be aware that uh Tuesday, April thirtieth is the last day to register to vote, so please do that.
Yeah, Jerry, well, um start off by thanking staff and Peter, thank you, you're, you guys do an amazing job. And um your um legal. Legal response to my not liking political signs, I I completely appreciate that and um it changed, it it did. Doesn't completely change the fact that I think that they're um pollution, but um I understand now, we cannot take away people's rights to. Um you know, the the, we can't do that and I would never ask to do that, I just personally don't like them. Um I I really appreciate the the um the conversations that we have, um it's been a while. Um it's been a while since we've had, you know, since th- this council, you know, um has been able to have these conversations. You know, in a, in such a uh.
Non. I I don't know, though, I don't know the right way to say it, but I really appreciate the conversations that we have. There's, there's no um ill will. We talk, um, we get our, we get our our opinions out there. We listen to other people's opinions. I really, really appreciate having that back on this council. It was that way for a while. Um, and then it wasn't, and it's it's back there again. And I really appreciate all of you for the hard work and just, you know. Um, just you guys have educated me so much on stuff and I just appreciate you. Um, I didn't like being a part of this council for a little while and I'm back to loving it. So I appreciate you guys, all of you for um for what you bring. Um, and all of you, everybody that shows up every week. Um, I do want to, uh, on a super positive note, I want to give a shout out to uh high school student Abby Berman. Who broke a Estacada High School record that stood for fifty years. And she didn't just break the record, she demolished the record in in uh discus, female discus, discus. So um special shout out to her. That was an amazing feat and uh look forward to um everything that our high school does, our high school students do in the coming year.
Okay. I'm gonna go light on you tonight, so this will end another broadcast day. Um, I missed the comments. I didn't have any comments. So this was good and quick and and we appreciate all of you. And you know, we are on spring break, so watch those kids out there. And have a good spring break. So we appreciate you. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.